I'd like to call the meeting's order. It's a pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we have no visitor wishing to speak, we have no written communication. As for the board, we do have to deal with the BOSI's Board of Education nomination. Am I correct that this is?
I'm sorry.
The nominate, we're just nominating tonight, right? It's not a formal vote.
That's correct.
There's three people running for two BOSI board spots, and we need to nominate two, I guess, to move to the election. So I had received three letters from two incumbents and one newcomer. I had sent those around originally when I got them. I think they went around again maybe today. So I don't know if you want any discussion. I know Donald knows the one gentleman, the newcomer. So I don't know, Donald, you want to say anything?
Yeah, so I used to work with Dirk Ravenold. He's a former Sweet Home Board member, and he sent us a letter. I've actually known him for over 25 years. And he's in the same industry as me. He's a financial professional at the UCF. I think he would do a really good job. He actually, he's done a lot of other things besides the letters. He was on the Amherst Senior Foundation with me. He was on the Rec Commission, was on the UCF Board, and he's done a bunch of different things. So I think he would make a good addition. I actually liked what he had to say about supporting BOSI's. And I know that he would be an open ear for us, which I don't think would be the worst thing either. So I would like to put his name forward for us to nominate.
Great. The other two are the incumbents, Mr. Ed Cavan, I believe, and Mrs. Renee Wilson. So if everybody's read, if everybody's have a opinion of what you want to do to nominate, I'm in favor of at least calling for Mr. Ravenold myself.
I felt like Renee Wilson's background was impressive. She was very involved with even, you know, with the PTA, which mirrors Philip Correa's background, so we're familiar with her path. And I felt strongly that she would be a good candidate.
I did as well, because I think she's the newest member on the board. And if you look at this board, it does have a lot of long-term people that have been obvious support. So and she's currently, she's one of the only ones that's actually a current City School Board member on a school board that does.
She's very active, very involved in all of the programs. What do you see as being asked to?
Is everybody good moving forward then with Mrs. Wilson and Mr. Ravenold?
Yeah.
Yes. Perfect. With that, we'll turn it over to the super committees. I'm sorry, did we have any committee meetings I should ask?
No, but I wanted to say that I was nominated, or I was asked to be nominated for the Executive Board of UCF.
Oh, great, that's great.
I accepted that ask, and I'll be put up on a slate to be voted in at the next eleventh meeting.
Well, that's great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good test, guys. Anyone else, any board committee reports, any? Sorry about that, Lee.
Yeah, no.
All right, it is over to you, Mr. Pidont.
Thanks. We have a lot of guests with us tonight. Pleased to welcome our high school and middle school administrators to provide us with a physically distanced presentation on the reopening plan and some highlights of what we've done so far this year with reopening during the pandemic. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. It's certainly great to be here, and since you missed us, we doubled the length of our presentation, just so you know in advance. And it's really always a pleasure, and we're grateful for the opportunity to shine a spotlight on both of our schools tonight, Amherst Middle School and Amherst Central High School. We have our teams here to present with us. Mr. Keis will be here from the middle school. Welcome, Mr. Keis. Great to have you here. And Ms. Nan Abels and Mr. Lonzak are here to present as well. Really eager to get into, shine a spotlight on the wonderful work of our students and all the hard work and dedication they've put into persevere this year, as well as the fantastic efforts of our faculty. Turn it over to Dr. Greisberg.
Indeed, it is a wonderful privilege to be here in front of all of you. Tonight, it's been some time. Thank you very much for having us. On board for tonight, I'll give you the agenda here in a second. Thank you, Mr. Lonzak. Our three main topics, we're going to spend a couple minutes highlighting the instructional delivery model that we're using here amidst the pandemic. We're going to spend some time talking to you about social, emotional learning highlights across both buildings, which, as you know, is very important always in education, but certainly in the middle of what we're in the middle of. It's grown. And then finally, we'll close out by highlighting some of the visual and performing arts that have been going on during this pandemic and despite initial challenges that trying to do things like that might present. So we'll start with our instructional delivery. And I'm sure you've seen this title or name before of our Amherst, our Amherst model. But if you haven't, we call it HiFlex 4+. And the concept here is that we are synchronous and concurrent. So it matters not whether a child is in their living room at one of our desks, whether a teacher is in her classroom, or has to be home that day. Our master schedules are eight-period days that get built over the summer with thousands of kids put into them, runs every single morning, four days a week, and throughout the day. And it is seamless and flat, which makes it very advantageous for all of our students and all of our teachers not to miss a beat. Now, we have those four days of live instruction, but the bonus, or the plus, if you will, speaks to an extra asynchronous day, which we've made on Wednesdays on both campuses, where students, as I think you know, can attend office hours for every single one of their teachers live, and then work on assignments that might be past due, just assigned that day, or with a due date forthcoming. And we're really proud of this model, and we have to give a tremendous shout-out to our teaching and learning committees, reopening committees that dealt with instruction. Because with a litany of challenges in terms of pulling this off for September, that group met multiple times and went back and forth between all of our stakeholders to come up with what we now embrace as our HiFlex 4+ model. And that committee was led by Dr. Shanahan, so I'd like to give her a shout-out as well. One of the major benefits of this model, in addition to it being flat and that you can attend it or teach it anywhere, is the fact that our longstanding instructional backbone of the essential elements of instruction that I know you've heard about through the years has been maintained. So that really means, you know, whatever type of classroom you walk into on our campus, you will see those central tenants of clear behavioral objectives, anticipatory sets, input modeling, times for students to practice, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we're just very, very happy to be able to keep that as the main standard, as the focus, so teachers can plan grade lessons and that's so students can do a whole bunch of learning amidst this pandemic. And I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Pidont, who will highlight some of the tech programs that are making the previous two slides I shared with you positive.
Naturally, we went into our instructional model knowing it was going to be tech-heavy, but we made a lot of very careful decisions about the tech we were using and not tech for tech's sake, things that enhanced learning. So we, you know, we settled on, obviously Zoom is the window into our world from the home and in many ways in the classroom. But we sought to find the best in those platforms that will increase the engagement, buttress those essential elements, and give the teachers the feedback they need to really move on and move forward with a good, robust learning model. Just, I'm going to give you just a selection of some of the tools in the tool belt that we chose as a group together with our teachers that we thought were the most effective and got the most instructional bang in terms of our book and what is delivering for the students in the classroom. One is Zoom, clearly, but Zoom has overlays that will increase the interactivity, because that's what we want, whether it's chat, polling, things of that nature, that pulls some feedback and information from students. This is Ruben Warros, one of our new teachers, but not a new face to Amherst, telling you a little bit about how we use the Zoom polling tool.
Hi, everybody. I'd like to highlight the Zoom polling function and how we saw this in high degree rotation. And what we see here first is a poll, or taking the pulse of the classroom, especially early on, essentially to get a feel for how many people are doing the unit net. And this one, it encourages a lot of feedback. I also like to check with whether that information was happening, or if you like an explanation or just interruption of the flow to receive things very effective. And then currently, I want to have people start reflection. If you can see it in a standard format like this, it really does drive up a lot of responses, giving us useful information through the time. All right, thank you for your attention.
Another tool in our tool belt is something that you may recall from a previous presentation of three, four years ago, when we started flipping classrooms. All of that investment in the right technology from the past has really paid off in this model. And Ms. Abels is here to tell you a little bit more about EdPuzzle.
So fortunately, we do have many teachers that were ahead of the curve and ready to hop right into this technology and also help their peers. So we're very fortunate about that. The one nice thing about the EdPuzzle is it allows to do some input modeling in place of homework, and then it allows time in class to do some other collaborative things, well, as best as we can, but still, the teachers have been very creative. And we have Jenny Kappel, who presented a few years ago, and I'll, I'm just going to stop and let Jenny talk. And then I'll follow up.
Hi, I'm Jenny Kappel, and here to give you a brief overview on how I really like to use EdPuzzle to create engaging video lessons for my students. My first ever part about EdPuzzle is how it creates synthetic videos. I like to use a screen cap device to create my own videos, but what I can do if I upload it into EdPuzzle is I can make it an engaging video by incorporating text for understanding of the video. Now, so this cannot fast-forward the video at all, and as they go through the video, they will stop, and they will have to answer a question to check their understanding before they'll move on to the next section of the video.
Just in the interest of time, we ran through this at 4:00 today, so we made some cuts, some last-minute cuts, in the interest of time, so I'll just, I'll be real fast. So the nice thing about EdPuzzle is the teachers can go through, they can see how the students did on the questions, they can see if they watched the whole thing, the GoGuardian, the EdPuzzle. There's not a lot of corners the kids can cut. We got them on a few angles, which is, which is a good thing. And then I will...
Hi, I'm Jenny Kappel, and here to give you a brief overview on...
She's so excited.
All right, and I think, Eric, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, everybody, good to see you in person. It's been a while. So as Dr. Greisberg mentioned, the 4+, the plus specifically, is related to Wednesdays in our Wednesday model, both at Amherst High and Amherst Middle. We started the year off with a major focus of asynchronous work and fully remote work. We had some connections to the building where students would come in, specifically remote learners, and pick up physical items from the school. We've been open for business all year, but as the year progressed, we really saw through our conversations with students, with parents, a greater need for some structure and support for some learners who just needed, again, a little bit more connection to the building. With that in mind, we've slowly been building up in-person attendance at Amherst High School and Middle School every Wednesday. This started out small and has continued to grow. A huge district-wide effort, it started very much in collaboration with Ms. Bezinski in the transportation office to get counseling for students who need it. Also, Ms. Old Willby and our food service provides free lunches to the students at Amherst Middle as well as Amherst High School. I do believe we have roughly 60 students planning to attend in person tomorrow at Amherst High School. The general model, the students coming in, working independently, having access to obviously those Zoom office hours for teachers if they are remote. Also, we have in-person teacher aides, aide support, some certified teachers, some of our day-to-day subs. You see Mr. Newport there at the bottom is a certified chemistry teacher and is also willing to come in on Wednesdays to offer additional in-person support to our learners. Aside from that, which has gone very, very well, Wednesday has been a great opportunity for additional enrichment and engagement. Now, let Ms. Abels talk.
So last year, we had two girls present, Dahlia and Helga, as our first Seal of My Literacy. And that is continuing this year. You can see in the upper left corner, this Sabat, who has been coming in on Wednesdays, unfortunately, quite a few Wednesdays, because she's not used to typing Arabic on the keyboard, and she's a one-finger typer, I feel so badly. So anyways, so it's taken her a few Wednesdays to resolve. We've also had kids that have come in and tested in German, two in Korean, Russian, and then Spanish. So yeah, so we've been, we've been very busy on Wednesdays.
And, you know, I will also thank Mr. Lonzak, Ms. Abels, Dr. Greisberg, Derek Keis, for really supporting and putting the work in to build the Wednesday model. It wasn't as easy as it looks in terms of opening the doors on Wednesday and really cajoling the kids to get the support they need and moving into the building when the comfort of home beckons. So the kids are coming, it's growing, week after week, it continues to grow, so we're looking forward to it. Also, it's been a nice opportunity for our National Honor Society peer tutors to get into action. We've always struggled sometimes with getting them to do some of their peer tutoring, because they have packed full schedules naturally, as high-achieving students, but on Wednesdays, they had a lot of free time. So we've had National Honor Society students coming in to help, and that's been really, really exciting. We're going to segue over a little bit to the social-emotional learning side of the equation, and as Dr. Greisberg mentioned, extremely important this year. We put a tremendous amount of emphasis on it. Highlighting the tradition and pride and achievement and tradition in our mantra at Amherst Central High School, one of the things that we wanted to do, starting from one year ago, last March, to this year, is preserve those traditions and make all of that thing that bring, those things that bring the color and life and excitement to school still in the equation. And we were able, and you'll see some from some of the slides and pictures, that we've been able to preserve most. So the approaches have been different, they've been novel, they've been unique and creative, but things have been happening that have always been happening. So we're extremely proud of that, and that has a lot to do with the student leadership that's really emerged within this pandemic. Our students have stepped up to do and fill some of those voids and things that needed to be done. I will share a little bit on a highlight slide, and I'll talk over it a little bit as well at some point, but I just want you to see the flavor of those traditions one coming in Winterfest that happened at Amherst High School. And here's just another sampling of just a day in the life at Amherst, and all of those wonderful things that have been going on with the school climate, extracurricular. Extracurricular is a big part of middle school and high school, and many of those things, we're proud of the fact that we were bold in terms of safely getting out there early with our extracurriculars in the fall, adding more around the new year, and specifically all of our competitive clubs, their parent organizations have all found a way to exist, whether it's Mock Trial, Quiz Bowl, DECA, all of those competitions, Latin Club, that have always happened, happened. So it's been wonderful. So this is a sampling of the day in the life at Amherst.
And as we just kind of move forward here, just a very important part again of mental health and social-emotional learning, beyond that overall kind of tier-one building-wide culture and climate building that we've worked on, specifically our more targeted interventions. One of those will be taking place next week during our First Annual Mental Health Awareness Week, and that's called the Life Savers Assessment. This is what we call a temperature check for our students to gauge how they're doing on an emotional, social, or academic behavioral standpoint. We're excited to launch that, have that be re-administered to them for the second time. Our then-student services team will analyze that data on an aggregate and also on an individual level to determine which students need some additional supports at the tier-two and three levels. But again, just bringing you back to Mental Health Awareness Week, this was really a grassroots effort by a lot of that leadership that has been so brightly seen from all of our students. It started with a lot of our pathfinders and trailblazers, and they came to us with this initiative of wanting to destigmatize mental health. This is an important initiative that we're seeing all around us during this pandemic, unfortunately, it's not unique to Amherst, and our students recognize that. And we're going to be launching several activities throughout the week next week at Amherst High School. You can continue to take a look at Tiger Times, at all of our social media accounts for a lot of that, and we're going to actually start to unveil Amherst Central High School Instagram page with a mental health flavor to kind of launch that and again, spread awareness on mental health. So we're excited to see where that goes and continue to grow that, and kudos to our student leaders for all of their work on it.
Where the high school gave you a really nice sort of cornucopia was in going across the field in social-emotional learning. I'm going to drill down into just two specific ones at the middle school. And so in this world of social-emotional learning, one of our new counselors, Ms. Ferret, who you may be familiar with, came up with an idea all on her own that is very powerful and has spread, and I'll let her explain how.
Hello, everybody. I'm Dr. Phil, and I'm currently one of the 7th grade professors here at AFS. I'm connecting many strategies towards students who are learning in social-emotional learning. With that in mind, I noticed that after the first time of the year, our students seem to hit a stage of disillusionment and lack of motivation. I felt a pain in the throat so that I balanced my life step. I thought I would need a proper time to build those protective or resilient feedback that students seem to regroup and remain positive for the second half of the year. I did a setup of operations behind this satellite, as done in the past. Within this campaign, I wrote compliments and encouraging words on posters and making sure that they were on each 7th grader's desk and then walked in in the morning. We're posting to receive their compliments via a jamboard that I posted in my Google question. It was very well received, and that pleased it so much that we are going to ask our web leaders to assist us in doing this for the 6th and 8th graders and the coming weeks. It's a small gesture that really helps us turn our energy towards hope and positivity. I think you can all agree, and we can certainly use that in our lives right now. Thank you.
So the sticky notes that are on Mrs. Barnes Ryan's door there were saved by Mrs. Barnes Ryan, because I know she really appreciated what Ms. Ferret did. We have 257th graders, so she wrote 250 personal sticky notes and put them on 250 desks minus the students who are virtual, but as you heard, she thought about them and did in jamboard a virtual posting, which is pretty powerful to start the second semester and a boost that kids lead. And what I love, and here's that student leadership piece, its grown legs such that our 8th grade web leaders are going to do it for all the 6th grade desks and all the 8th grade desks. And I really think that that's fantastic. Small gesture, she's like she said, but it goes a long way. Next slide, Mr. Lonzak, if you would.
Hello, everybody.
Our teachers are so excited about this. And then the second thing I'll highlight in the world of social-emotional learning is one example of what we do in our afternoon home base to really try to keep kids going and get to know each other more and connect a little bit. You may have seen this on social media, but when the bills were making their run, we had several home bases put together, hype videos as they call them, as they call them, and this one, this one got a little, a little social media time. Mr. Lonzak, if you will, we'll just show you a brief snippet. It's the song I think you know. And so now we're going to transition to the final portion of our presentation, and that is highlighting visual and performing arts. And to do that, we're going to start with middle school, and I'm going to have someone who you don't know yet come up and share this portion of our presentation. I'd like to introduce our new assistant principal, Mr. Derek Keis, too. He's already made a wonderful impact in our building with our families and with our kids, and I look forward to all of you getting to know him a little bit better. So, Mr. Keis, if you would, the floor is yours.
So before I begin, I just want to say this is a lot of, well, a lot of people to be meeting at the first, first meeting for me, and obviously face-to-face, I just kind of wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. It's been a very big blessing for me, my family, part of, obviously, the Amherst family, the tradition, and the community. So with that said, thank you. What we are going to be highlighting today is the, I guess I will refer to them as pandemic adaptations in the visual arts. When it becomes very difficult, obviously, to kind of adapt your curriculum to what is normally done in person, our teachers kind of took a very, very creative route to bring what normally would happen inside the room. They still brought it to the kids, but through Zoom, they did it through virtual field trips. Students were able to tour Knox, Albright Knox Museum, the Barton House. They were able to interact with guest speakers. They were able to interact with the tour guides face-to-face live and actually kind of, you know, ask questions instead of just kind of being on computer and looking at things. So one of those things that they also did for guest speakers was bringing in graphic designers, you know, obviously artwork and how that can be translated far beyond middle and high school and what opportunities students can have later on. They designed some logos for some of the departments. And then I also wanted to make sure, I really highlighted Ms. Klein's, or Priscilla Klein's virtual field trip kind of scavenger hunt, where, again, amongst a pandemic and trying to be safe and bring families together, she actually got together, got some families together and toured Western New York. She made sure she put map directions on there, kind of take pictures if you want, but obviously at a safe distance, but allowed families, students, and the district to kind of come together and see what Western New York had to offer. So the next one, performing arts, and I can't stress this enough, is it's perseverance for a passion. And when a lot of districts and a lot of communities are trying to, you know, see what they can and cannot do, Amherst found a way. And that was one of the biggest shocks to me, obviously, over the last couple of weeks since I've been here. Amherst found a way, safely, as well as trying to find different spots, different ways to get kids involved in something that they're passionate about. So we kind of threw in a couple pictures of what our auditorium looks like on a daily basis from course, 12 feet apart, kids still practicing in our gymnasiums, all right? Desks are set up up six... All right, desks are set up up six feet apart, kids are practicing. And we put a video in there just to kind of show you what that change of setting looks like. And they haven't missed a beat.
They all have headphones, they're looking at their Chromebooks. Mr. O'Donnell has headphones on, he's conducting the kids at home and those in front of him. It's going out.
But again, they're persevering through all of this to kind of pursue their passion. And the other, the last thing I just want to make sure we highlight because it just happened a few, a few weeks ago, is the creativity by everybody involved in the performing arts to make sure that the musical went on. And if anybody has had an opportunity to view it, it's, it's pretty amazing from a creative, creativity standpoint, from choreography to singing. Some of you might have a personal connection to some of the, the people in the musical. But I just want to make sure that we highlight that as well. And, you know, talking with some, some of the students and some of the staff, you know, the news highlighted because it's just out of the box thinking that obviously Amherst is doing far and above everybody else. So I'm going to turn it over to May, her students' videos. Make sure she highlights those.
Sorry, you're old enough, you call me Dan. So continuing following with the high school, we're just going to, we're going to highlight a symposium lift every voice which closed out Black History Month. Mr. Pomelars, Justin Pomelars, in conjunction with Dr. Malcolm Meriwether, who is on our, he is building the program at Brooklyn College. But he is a very good friend of Amherst Corral and has worked with us for a couple of years. He along with Dr. Jamon Dunn, Assistant Conductor with BPO, ran this symposium for our Corral students. And then in conjunction with the orchestra and the Wind Ensemble, they did compile, they did compile a video which is posted on Facebook. And BPO liked it. They, they shared it because they wanted to show the, the community outreach for, for Dr. Dunn. So it's also on the, on the BPO. I, we're not going to play it now, it's posted on Facebook. I encourage you, the kids worked so hard. And Kirsten Roast?
Reiter.
Red Reiter also worked very hard of putting that all together too. I certainly want to bring her name up because she is our new band instructor. And now I think I'm introducing a game host?
I believe you are, yes.
I think I'm introducing a game host.
Mr. Longzak will intro that.
So yes, thank you. We wanted to bring things full circle here and a little bit of closure activity, bringing back SEL again, that importance. SEL can be a heavy hitting component at times, mental health of course can, but it doesn't always need to be. It can also be community building, it can be fun every morning. Our extended homeroom time is an example of that. One such example, an all-star duo, Ms. Ward at the high school, who you know, and her counterpart in homeroom, Mr. Murray. Every Wednesday specifically start out with SEL activities during that extended homeroom, icebreaker activities, fun community building activities, guest speakers from upperclassmen. And one thing they've done, which is really great, is they actually have been able to gather baby photos of all of their students. They reached out to their parents and they play a game called Guess That Baby, where they'll put up a baby picture of one of their own students and they'll kind of slowly reveal that. So I'm going to turn this over to you. We're going to have a little fun right now to end and play a little Guess That Baby. Your host, Mr. Pigeon.
Thank you. I always fashioned myself as a game show host or a meteorologist perhaps. But so as I reveal these pictures, if you feel bold enough that you know who the identity of the baby is, feel free to raise your hand. And there will be prizes at some point, so we will. We'll start with the left reveal. Does that give you any sort of clue, anybody yet? No. Reveal another one. Anybody yet? No, last one. Anybody who know, know who that extremely handsome baby was from July 28th, 1966?
Yes, Mr. Pigeon.
That would be me, Mr. Pigeon. The next one may be challenging as well. We'll reveal the first square. How about the next square? And finally, the final square. Anybody hazard a guess at this handsome devil? That would be your superintendent, Mr. Anthony Finau. And that's compliments of a conspiracy approved by one Rosa Finaus. To make sure. So thank you for your kind attention tonight. We are once again just so proud of our, our students, our community throughout this whole pandemic. Everybody's really come together. One of our mantras has been that the glass is half full. And I think the Amherst glass is A) full of a lot of caffeine and B) overflowing. Because our teachers, our students, our community has gone above and beyond to make things happen that are really inspiring. So thanks to everybody and thank you for all of your support over this past 12 months. And if you have any questions, we're here, feel free. Any questions?
Can you share the video with us so we can watch the full life course of everything?
Yes.
I think the one that we did in our update doesn't have the links.
Yeah, from the whole of the presentation? Yeah.
You know what, I'll make sure.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you. I think you guys have done a great job adapting. It seems like you've been super creative. I mean, it makes me as a parent proud that, you know, my daughter goes to school here. So thank you very much for everything you guys have done and continue to do.
And I love seeing the middle school and the high school working together, collaborating more, you know, seeing more in Smallwood and living in the spirit as well.
I know many times you guys are making decisions on the fly, changing things up quickly as these times, everything changes so quickly sometimes. Even graduation last year, just what it was supposed to be, what it became. Just great, you guys did a wonderful job.
Keep up the great work. It's definitely been a team effort and I appreciate everything you're doing. And I've been lucky enough to meet with many of our teachers for their unannounced observations. And I think across the entire district, everybody really appreciates the way we approached the pandemic in a collaborative and cooperative manner. So great job, everybody. Mrs. Mazinski is here for the latest budget update next.
I always get so far off with the money stuff.
Nobody's pictured.
All right.
Well, thank you. So tonight we have a presentation on our budget that will incorporate our program changes for this year. The slides keep getting longer, but our conversation doesn't have to get longer because the presentation is meant to be inclusive of our previous presentations and conversations so that by the end, we have a complete picture of how our budget needs to be. So we do have some minor changes in revenues and expenditures. We'll go over those and I'll highlight the items that are in the blue because those are changed or new. We will also talk about the potential for a new capital reserve. And Superintendent Finau and I will review with you the advocacy efforts that we've undertaken in the last month or so in relation to state aid. So on revenues, we had very minor change in our tax cap calculation from our last presentation. We were at 3.15% increase. And since then, we received our projection for Bosse's aid, which affects our capital exclusion. The change was only $5,000 and it didn't affect our overall revenues, but it did affect our tax cap. So that $5,000 increase in Bosse's aid reduces our tax cap by that amount, but then it increases our aid by that amount. So overall, there's no change in revenue, it's just a change in source of revenue. So it leaves us with a tax cap of 3.14%, which was about $5,000 lower. It is what we included in the budget and it is what we submitted to the state controller for our projected tax cap. It was due on March 1st, but we do have the ability to change it all the way up through budget dash. So while we have to submit it and tell them what our intentions are, we do have the opportunity to edit that if needed. So at this time, we would like to know from the board if you are comfortable with us moving forward at cap. It's not at CD cap, but it's at cap. Or if there's other conversation that you want to have us to change that at any point before we have more information to say that.
Mr. Revo, you're good?
Thank you, thank you. So we'll keep that in place at cap. And then we receive our student aid projections in April. We'll be able to have another conversation with that in our April presentation if we want to stay at cap or if we want to adjust that for any reason based on what we learn on April 1st, hopefully with the legislative budget. So as you can see, our total revenue stayed in black because it didn't change. It's 63. almost $5 million dollars or a 1.66% increase in revenue from our current year budget. For our staffing changes, we do have some anticipated staffing changes. We have retirements, 13 retirements that have included in the budget for breakage. The breakage of those positions resulted in about $458,000 of reduced expenditures in both salary and fringe benefits for our payroll taxes, bike, med, ERS, and TRS. So we had one administrator, seven teachers, three nurses, and two support staff. But we want to make sure that we point out that all of these positions are scheduled to be rehired and none of them are being eliminated or reduced through attrition. And I believe actually all the postings are either out or will be out shortly. Already out, okay, great. Other staffing changes that we have included in tonight's budget are not necessarily programmatic changes, but enhance our program by refreshing the different staffing levels. So in the high school and middle school, we have two teachers who are working an extra assignment in Ls, or English language learners, or English for new, or English for, English is a new language. So our teachers teach five periods and we needed some extra support for some of our Ls students. So they picked up an additional period. But we're finding that even those two additional periods is not enough to support the needs of our students as our L populations are growing. So we're proposing to reduce those two sixth assignments from those teachers. So they're still full-time teachers, they just won't have the additional assignments. And we'll hire a full-time L teacher, which takes a two-period addition and makes it a five-period addition because we'll have another full-time teacher. Also in the middle school, based on our student needs and our classes, we need a little bit of additional support in the area of technology. With the new capital project in the high school, we have fabulous new technology waiting for next year. So we're really looking to increase our technology offerings in that curriculum. So we're taking a teacher who's currently split in time between the high school and the middle school and letting that teacher be focused on the new curriculum in the high school. But it left the middle school short a period. So we will be asking one of our current technology teachers to pick up a sixth assignment to make sure that all of our student needs are covered. We currently have two part-time visette teacher assistants in one in the high school, one in the middle school. And we are proposing to reduce those two part-time positions and replace it with a full-time health and PD teacher. And that person will be split between the high school and middle school. And the purpose of that is to help support our health curriculum and our mental health curriculum that we want to focus on in both of those buildings. We have two teacher assistants in the elementary schools. Both again are part-time and we are proposing to reduce those teacher assistants. They're currently each running a special friends program which focuses on social skills for some of our younger students. But the reduction of those positions will allow for the addition of a full-time health and PD teacher again, which will be focused in the elementary buildings. And as you can see here, that person is slated to be in Smallwood as a full-time position. But we are still going to have a full-time position in Windermere as well. That change is just through transfers of existing staff. But the benefit of this is we will have full-time teachers at both elementary schools focused on the health, mental health curriculum and the health curriculum that is a new mandate. So we'll be able to meet that need. And the special friends program will be maintained and picked up by the counselors that are in each building currently. We are looking to increase our communication support. We currently have three days of support. We're looking to increase that to five days of support next year. In our elementary schools, we have two CODA positions, which are Certified Occupational Therapy Assistants. And we are looking to reduce each of those and replace them with occupational therapists. The difference is that our CODAs can service students and provide therapies for students, but they have to do it under the direction of a licensed occupational therapist. So our OTs are required to not only supervise our CODAs, but they do all of our evaluations, our reportings, our CSE meetings. By changing those positions to occupational therapy positions, not only are we able to maintain all of the sections of services and therapies that we're able to provide, but then those OTs can do more evaluations and attend meetings, which lessens the load for our current OTs so that they can then see more students and provide more direct therapies to our kids. And then finally, we have a specialized program in ELA that is currently in the middle school. And we will have a need for that program in the high school next year as well as our students are moving up to ninth grade. So the sixth assignment in the high school will be able to cover that need for those students in that specialized program. All of these changes together, the reduction and then the new hires, are an increase to our budget of $152,000. So when we take those two together, the reductions of 158 and the increase in budget of 152 for our staffing changes, we have a net potential reduction of about $306,000. And we'll talk about that in a minute, about how we're going to identify that in our budget. So with all of those changes in place, our overall personnel increase is 1.9% from the current year or about $566,000. The benefits, the ERS and TRS rates, we are renewing at 16.2 and 9.8. So those changes are just adjustments based on the movement of those positions and those changes. In general support, we have a small increase of about $15,000. In our previous presentation, it was closer to five. And that difference is because we're taking $10,000 that we currently had budgeted in Bosse's for a professional development service for next year. We're going to change the vendor for that service, we're still going to have it. So we just took that money and we moved it up into the curriculum budget. So it just counts in a different category. It's not an increase or a decrease, it's just a change from Bosse's up into general support. So in our contingency line, so every year we have a $500,000 contingency line, which we fund with fund balance and we keep in our budget for unplanned expenditures. So as you know, this year, that was a lifesaver for us. It allowed us to have flexibility in our budget to meet the needs of our school during the pandemic and so many of the unplanned expenditures we needed. This is where we're proposing to put that additional breakage from those staffing changes. By identifying it in our contingency line and increasing that line from $500,000 to $806,000, we're still recognizing that breakage, but we're not taking it out of our budget so that we have more flexibility next year. It doesn't affect our taxpayers or our tax levy because we're still proposing to fund it with fund balance. But if we need it next year, if our stimulus money doesn't come through, if we have cuts in state aid, we'll have $300,000 that we can use to hire more teachers if we need to teach remote again, to buy whatever we might need to buy to make sure that our doors can open if we're able to in September and continue to meet the needs of our kids when we really don't know what those needs are going to be or what education is going to look like. But this allows us to be better prepared. And then in the event that we don't need it, it'll sit there and we won't spend it. But it doesn't affect our taxpayers because it's fund balance that's supporting it and not our tax. that's supporting it and not our taxpayer.
And this is really a unique budget here at this point, given some of the distractions that are going on in Albany and the need for us to really get some answers relative to the budget. Because you may recall, the governor took the stimulus funds that New York got and reduced it out of his executive proposal. So Amburst was slated for $2.8 million, but in the executive proposal, that was offset by a reduction. And he had indicated that it depends on what kind of money comes to the state for to fill his budget gap, to see how much of that could flow through the schools. I was pleased to see that the Senate and Assembly both released their one-house budgets this week. And both of them included not only an increase to foundation aid, and they were supporting both a full phasing in of, excuse me, a phasing in of full foundation aid over the next three years, but also using the stimulus money from the federal government to supplement the budget, not supplant money that's in the budget. So we have other planning going on outside of this budget for what we may do with the stimulus money that we have a couple of years to use. But there is good news that it was put in a supplemental form as opposed to supplanting money. Because that means we're less likely to have a financial cliff where that federal money is gone. And there won't be that gaping hole left in the foundation aid and the state aid. So if, and then the stimulus package that was just passed, the 1.9 trillion one, that amount hasn't been talked about through the state's budget development to this point. And I think from early indications, Amburst was slated for close to $3 billion for that. So some of the conversations we've been having, as Mrs. Wazinski talked about, are transportation-related, you know, building systems, ventilation, air purification, extended school day relative to transportation, summer programming to address learning loss, additional remedial programming throughout the year to address learning loss, on top of probably staffing what I've started to call a pit school, which would be a fully remote option so that our teachers in the district can focus on in-person learning and we would staff a fully remote option for those that choose that moving forward separately so that our folks aren't getting asked to do both, as we saw in the presentation from the middle and high school. So we're almost developing a budget outside of the budget if that stimulus money were to become available. But the good news is, in the one-house budgets, it's both the Senate and Assembly are supporting that money becoming available in a supplemental fashion as opposed to supplanting existing dollars.
The other piece with our contingency line is if in the event we don't need the $300,000, that will be identified as a way to reduce our budget for next year and could be a potential closure. Our change in BOCs was the change in our communications support from three days to five days, and the transfer of those professional development dollars up into our curriculum budget. We had no changes in transportation or debt service. And we did not have any change in our bottom line expenditures. It was just a shift in dollars from one category to another, which leaves us with a projected budget of $64.3 million, or a 3% increase over current year spending. Again, we have the same gap of $808,000. We could reduce it more, but that then limits our flexibility in next year and gives us less opportunity for purchasing or hiring if that's what's needed based on our reopening guidance. So in summary, our budget is increasing 3%, or 1.9 million. And the majority of those increases are our personnel benefits, BOCs, and our contingency line, $306,000 on our contingency line. Our gap closers stay the same, as COCO increases state aid, discussing spending reductions, increase in fund balance allocation, consideration of moving the levy above our cap, or additional appropriations from reserves. We'll be able to talk about that more in our April presentation after we have a better idea of what our state aid looks like, assuming the state aid budget comes out the first of April on the table. The additional topic that we wanted to bring up with you tonight is the establishment of a new capital reserve. So we had talked about this at length last year, and we had settled on proposing it to our voters, the establishment of the capital reserve, not the funding of it, with a maximum funding level of $10 million and a maximum funding term of 10 years. So once we establish it, we have up to 10 years to put money into it. That money would be earmarked for setting the local share for capital work, but we have a significant amount of time to be able to build that up and then use it to offset the local share for any future capital projects that we want to do in any of our four buildings. We would not plan on adding a budgetary line to tax the taxpayers to increase this reserve. Our plan would be to fund it using year-end dollars that are above and beyond what maybe we want to put in other reserves or in 4%. We can put it in our legal notices, they need to go out at the end of this month. And then this would go then on the ballot and will pour the voters in there. So this is what we had planned on doing last year, but at the last minute, we pulled it because COVID was hitting. We didn't know what was going to happen with our vote. It was then became in person. And because it was so different for all of our taxpayers, we wanted to make sure that our budget process was as simple as possible and that all we were asking of them was budget and for not elections. So we would like to put this back in, but we would ask the board if this is something that you would support and if those levels are also what you would support.
So if you established it in May, would you then also have, well, let's just say, life changed and money fell out of the sky? This is just a, you know, could you fund it this year also?
Yes, because we don't fund until July 1 through August 30. So we have 16 fiscal days from year-end to fund our reserves. So we would meet about this in June. So if it was established in May by the voters, when we have our June presentation, we reserve our long-range plan for reserves. And we give the board a projection of what we think our fund balance is like. And our recommendations on a maximum amount that we feel we should put in each reserve. So at that time, we would have the conversation of how much we would want to put in each of the reserves, and we could include this. We also have our current capital reserve, which is a $500,000 limit and has $300,000 in it. So it carries room for another $200,000 if we so chose.
But that one expires?
It was a, I don't remember if it was a private, I think it was a 10-year term.
Yeah, we added it in 2017, initiated it. So it still has a couple of years.
Yes.
So in theory, if the voters decided that at this point they didn't like it, we could put it off till next year and start it, you know, the block.
Yeah.
Next year, possibly.
Yeah. So, and that's why this is the establishment of it, not the funding of it. So we're just asking the voters to authorize the creation of it. And then it becomes a board decision on when and how we fund it through our June meeting and then our external audit. And we know where our fund balance actually ends, where it ends. And then we have another fund balance and reserve meeting in November when we talk about the activities that actually happened.
I just worry that we understand that you're making a place for it and you're not putting money there, but voters who don't read or watch or do all those things, who maybe are going to, again, vote remotely or, you know, through the mail, may vote it down because they don't necessarily understand, you know? So in that case, then our person who's going to be now working five days could do some, you know, describing of what we're trying to do over the next year and then we can bring it back for some reason. People don't like it this year because they're just not getting what we're doing. You know what I mean?
I do. Well, we'll also have information in our budget newsletter, which will have a detailed description of the purpose and those details in our budget newsletter that goes out to everybody prior to vote. But again, there are going to be some people that don't read it. There are going to be some people that read it but still don't understand it. It's not, school finance is not always an easy topic. But we try to make it as clear as possible and as straightforward as possible. But it is up to the taxpayers. There aren't many reserves that you can voter authorize, but this is one of them. So it does become their decision.
So you do an excellent job of describing it by the way, Mrs. China.
And I know there's some opportunity for Mrs. China to do PPR work for this year as well. You know, in budget newsletter time and everything, you know, to share information about it for this year.
I think one of our other decisions that supported bringing it back at this time, because we did pull it last year for exactly that reason. There are districts around us that are putting out large projects, 50, 60,000 dollar projects, big capital. And they did it last year when we pulled ours, and they all went through. They all got approved. So that, for me, made me feel more comfortable putting it forward now because there are taxpayers that are authorizing large expenditures for their districts. Even in last year, when things were even more crazy, I think, than they are right now.
Is there anything?
Yes.
I would like to see, I guess, a plan, right? So, I mean, this seems like really, really open-ended. And so you could, you know, our, whatever, whoever our communications person is, they can come out and say whatever they want. But, you know, really what we're saying is that we may borrow, or we may raise up to $10 million for something in the future. And that's just really, really open-ended to me.
Some information that I would share with the taxpayers is that a $10 million reserve offsets roughly the local share of a $40 million project. So we could do $40 million worth of work and not affect our taxpayers.
Yeah, I get it.
So our current project is $30 million.
But the way it seems to me, is the way I, I guess I could read it, is that we're going to have money in search of something. I'd rather know and I'd feel more comfortable is that these are the things that we would like to do and these are the reasons that we want to do them. And because of that, this is what we want to do.
I understand that approach. Part of the difficulty with that is the timing. It's going to take us much longer to save $10 million in the reserve than it's going to be to develop a $40 million project. So it'll take us many more years to get that funded, to really offset that $40 million project than it will to develop it. So we've already actually started the work of developing our next capital project. We don't have enough of the details for the framework set yet to be able to bring it forward to the capital committee. But we're already working with the administrative team and our financial advisor to find out what it could look like, how much we could, how much work we can do in each building without exceeding our maximum cost allowances for aid, what we would incorporate into that. So the building principals have been meeting with Mr. Rampato to put together wish list items for each building and not only include fix-it items, but also include curriculum items and different things that we want to change moving into the future. So that work has started, but we haven't shared it publicly because the details aren't finalized. But it'll take us less time to do that work than it will to fund that reserve. So I understand your thought on that. I just know that if you don't do this part first, you won't get there in time to use it to offset the local share before you would need to ask the voters to approve it. And the money has to be, has to be established and funded before you can ask the voters to approve a project in which you're using the reserve to offset local share.
Mrs. Wazinski, you still need board approval to take the money out of that reserve to spend it then?
We need voter approval to take money out of that reserve. So when we would move forward, when we were ready to put a project vote before the voters, the resolution that we would put forth would include an X amount of dollars will be used from the 2021 capital reserve. And that's why the funds have to already be there before you take a project to the voters, because you can't save for the project after the project's been approved.
So the voters will have a plan then to?
They would know what it's going to be spent on.
They'll know what it's going to be used on.
But they wouldn't necessarily know what we would be using it for when they're establishing the reserve. And only the board can decide to put money into it.
It doesn't sound like the capital committee's going to know either, though.
Capital committee wouldn't know for what the reserve is going to be spent on, but they would be in the process, in the decision-making process on how the project is developed and what's going for voters.
Yeah, we've got buildings that are old. The high school was built in the 1930s. The other building was built in the 50s. And we know we're going to have to do capital construction down the road. This just puts us in a situation to offset the taxpayers' burden. We have about a four-to-one ratio with what we can build for what the taxpayers have to fund. So our goal would be to try to make it as tax-neutral as possible so that our debt service stays level or actually decreases over time. But we can still upgrade our buildings and, you know, keep, maintain them, and upgrade and maintain them. So we've had a few capital projects over the last several years where we've done a lot of work, but there's still work to just the nuts and bolts of the buildings that has been done, especially our high school HVAC systems, you know, normal utility upgrades. So this just puts us in a situation to potentially save to offset that down the road. I think the point would be, if we don't do it, we're missing an opportunity. We won't be able to do it. So if we don't do this now and we decide we need $20 million to upgrade our auditoriums and HVAC system at the, at the high school and middle school, you know, then we won't have the ability to offset the taxpayers if we don't establish it now. And again, there's no commitment to funding it and there's no commitment to any future projects. But if it's not there, then we don't have the option to put money aside for future capital work.
I think that maybe we ought to get the capital committee involved sooner rather than later, though, just to be apprised of what, you know, potentially we're looking at.
Yeah, we started and then the pandemic hit. So we were, we were ready to roll last March with pulling the committee together. And we were targeting December of 2020 for a potential vote for approval of a project. And the pandemic hit a year ago. So we kind of put that on hold. But for, to prepare for the capital committee, we engaged our administrators and our stakeholders and tried to compile a list of, you know, prioritized needs relative to capital construction in each building. We also went to our building condition survey. And then we worked with our financial advisors from Capital Markets to see how we might be able to do different levels of funding and what the impact would be on the local share. And we were prepared to bring that forward to the capital committee. And then we got COVID. COVID hit.
Because if we had called the committee meeting first, we wouldn't have had any information to give to or any answers to give to without doing that homework first.
Mr. Vivaldi, are you good with putting that to the voters?
Yeah.
So I can talk about these next couple of slides if you want me to. These ones are somewhat of a review. So you may recall, we talked about areas of concern in the executive proposal. What is very nice to see is that the one-house budgets from the legislators, the Assembly and the House are not supporting many of these areas of concern that we identified, which I think we heard when we met with our individual legislators. So the proposal to have foundation aid frozen for a second year has actually been not supported by the legislators. They're proposing a phase-in over a number of years of the full of the full foundation aid amount, which, as you may recall, our full foundation aid amount is like $5 million more than what we're actually getting. So if they begin a phase-in in that over three or four years, that certainly benefit us. In addition to that, they're not supporting the governor's proposal for a second year to lump together our expense-based aids. So that's good news. They also are not supporting his proposal to put the STAR deduction into the state aid run, which again is another piece that was a little bit of an undermined way to, to cap and cut aid. So that has not been supported by either of the one-house budgets. And then we talked a little bit about the federal stimulus deduct. So right now, the 2.8 million showed up as a deduct in the executive proposal run. And again, both the Senate and Assembly have supported that money being removed from the state aid run and being provided to school districts as supplemental aid for the pandemic. And then we don't know what the third COVID stimulus money would, how that would be provided. Again, we're assuming that that would be also supplemental in nature and we'd have a few years to use that money to support our successful reopening. And then we talked about whether or not we were on the financial cliff because as you may recall, it's, it's eerily similar to back when you had a governor who was in royal in a crisis and then potentially on the way out the door. And we had a new governor that came in, New Patterson, in a financial crisis, federal stimulus dollars that came in. It was used to supl, to plant money in the school district budget. And then when it was dried up, we were left with all the race-to-the-top reforms, which many of you lived through. And then that money was gone. And it was still a deduct in our aid in the form of a gap elimination adjustment. So a lot of people having lived through that in '09, '10, '11, were really ringing the bell on that. So it was nice to see that the federal stimulus dollars are being supported as supplemental funds. And both the Senate and Assembly, I think they differ on the number, but they are in favor of increasing the amount of unappropriated fund balance that we're allowed to keep from 4%. I've seen 6% in one of the proposals and 8% in another proposal over the course of five years. So we, we plan to maintain that increase in our fund balance regardless of what they do. But it would be nice if we could be in compliance with the law. But, so a lot of the areas of concern we have for the executive proposal seem like they're going to be addressed, or at least they've been addressed in the legislators' proposals. We'll see how those negotiations play out over the next couple of weeks. And then, again, we talked about foundation aid. So recently, you know, we're at about 59.5%. So one of the proposals from the legislators is that school districts would either get a phase-in amount, 60% of their full foundation aid, or a 2% increase depending upon which one is higher. So for us, I would assume the phase-in amount, if you look at what our full phase-in is, it's around 12.8 million. We're at 7.6. If they were to commit to phase-in that full amount over a three- or four-year period, our phase-in amount per year would be more than 2% or bringing us up to 60% from 59.5. So that could be very beneficial for us moving forward. Because as you may recall, some districts are already getting 100% or more of their full foundation aid. So Amherst sits at 59.5%, where some districts in Erie County are at 87, 98, 113. So the proposal that's on the table, if I'm looking at a district here like in Iroquois that's getting 113% of their foundation aid, 2% would probably be the amount that would be higher for them of those three categories. For us, a full phase-in of what the 12 million over three years would probably be higher than 2% or bringing us up to 60% of that amount. So we'll see if that gets legs or how it plays out in negotiations. But the good news is, so far, discussions for the state budget are to increase foundation aid and provide the federal stimulus dollars in a supplemental fashion. So that's very positive news.
Where would this money, if we do get the 3 million, you know, the federal stimulus, or maybe, where does it flow into our budget? How does it flow in? Does it?
The capital reserve. No, I'm just kidding. We would, we would probably, it'll probably be in the form of a grant. We did receive the $400,000 amount, which was deducted, but it came in the form of a grant. Yeah, so there will be specific items that it can be spent on. We'll have to do a grant application and submit it for approval and then we'll get it in that form. So what does it come from then as in the, as fund?
A grant fund? Normally it would, but this specific one, they required everyone to put in an aid fund, but we did still need to submit an application for it.
So we would get the money, it would go into our aid fund, and then to spend it, we have to put applications in and?
Yes. So if you remember when we received the money from Erie County, it was about $339,000, we asked the board to do a budget amendment because it was unplanned by them. So we were able to increase our expenditure budget by that amount. We created separate Erie County CARES Act money codes. And then we moved our expenses into those codes to $10. So Erie County sent us the money right up front. These grants, fill out the application. And when they approve it, they give you a deposit by 20% of the full amount. And you give that check. And then as you spend it, you do draw down the costs. So you spent the 20 and you spent another $10,000. You send them the report and then they rehearse. By the end of it, it catches up, bud.
For the $2 trillion package that was just passed, you know, I think the number that I saw that was put out there by Representative Higgins was that Amherst would be a little over $3 million would be our allocation. But there's a list, like they want us to spend at least 20% of that to address learning loss. And then there are other categories of approved expenses, you know, like staffing to lower class sizes, upgrading ventilation systems, and so on and so forth. So love to make sure that we're earmarking approvable expenses, but yet also, you know, one-time expenses that aren't going to create an ongoing budget burden that the general public has to pick up.
So what, what do our elected representatives say when they're shown these numbers?
Well, Paula and Jean were with me in that meeting. I think the response was different in, in a good way. Senator Rath was very impressed by the numbers and the data in the sense that it gave him something tangible to be able to advocate on our behalf with. And he had actually asked after the meeting, can you send me that? Which I was pleased to wait through that chart. Yeah, that chart. And, you know, Assemblymember McMahon, we had started down this path with her before. And she had actually teamed up with other Assembly members across the state of districts that were in the same category as us as being under 60% of our full foundation aid. So she teamed up with, I think, 40 other legislators from across the state to start an advocacy effort last year on behalf of the, you know, 8% of the districts statewide that are in the situation we're in.
So, but I mean, did they, or I guess she, you know, the senators knew, the Assemblywoman has been around. But, so did she acknowledge that a year's gone by, nothing's happened? And so Amherst is in an even worse position?
Yeah, I think so because the foundation aid was held flat. So there was no increase to foundation aid. So that 7.6 million that we got in 1920 was the same amount that we got in 2021.
Being that she was in a different party, obviously a different party affiliation, she seemed, she was more adamant on some of these things like the transportation and the, like, things like, no, that's dead, that's not happening. You know, we recognize.
The expense base.
Yeah, the expense base, you know, stuff. So she was very, when you say, Jean, she was very adamant, like, that's, that's dead, don't worry.
Yeah, she was very, you know, I mean.
She seemed understanding.
She did, yeah, she was already familiar with each of the things we discussed. And, and she, she knows personally the gentleman who's spearheading this fix here. And it got started and then it, it hit a little bit of a brick wall, but it's still an ongoing conversation. And I think other things came in front of it, you know, truthfully, between now. And, but it is still out there. And she was going to circle back with the gentleman who's, you know, kind of the lead for that task force.
Didn't she say that gentleman to, his wife is an Amherst alum as well?
Yes, yeah, his wife's an Amherst.
So she had a connection there with her being an Amherst alum as well?
Is this a statewide issue? No, it has to be like across the state that people that have.
Yeah, there's only a handful of districts that are under 60%. I think we're in the category, if you move ahead, and I think.
We were on the shortlist of.
There was like not going to be.
Advocating for.
So there are more than 60% that are represented, but this is getting some.
Yeah, there's like 92% of the districts statewide are getting a higher percentage of the foundation aid than we are. So we're in a 8%. So there was like 42 districts that were under 60%. So that's why I was pleased to see. One of the things I emphasize with the legislators is you can't just add more money to the foundation aid amount and then let the formula keep running because the formula will just keep us at a disadvantage. So everyone will go up, but proportionately will still stay behind. So I was pleased to see that they want to add, they want to phase in the full funding of foundation aid, but they don't want to increase everybody equally. So districts, you know, some districts will get either the higher amount of phase-in dollars or 2% or up to 60% of the full amount, whichever of the three is higher. So a district that has 100% or over 100% of the foundation aid currently will get a 2% increase where we're $5 million behind our full amount. You know, we may get a larger increase. And that was one of the things I emphasized with both of our representatives is you can add a billion dollars to the overall amount every year. But if you push it through the same formula, we're going to keep staying that much further behind everybody. So someone, someone has to stop and move money in a certain direction so that it goes where it needs to be, not just proportionately throughout the formula. So I was pleased with the meetings we had with the legislators. And to say the least, they, they, this year, they may be in a, a position of bargaining power as this budget gets developed over the next couple of weeks.
Does anybody have any questions for me going along with? Our next presentation will be on the 13th. And hopefully by then, we'll have information on state aid. We'll have a better idea of what that looks like and how we want to close our final round. Thank you.
Thank you. We will need a motion for new business items.
Make a motion for new business items E1, A through J, 2, B through E, 3, B, C, D, E, and H.
Do you have a second?
It's actually 2B, D, E.
Mr. Simon? I just want to mention.
Oh, yeah, there's no A, I guess.
No, no, I just want to mention though that in the nominating of two candidates, that you have chosen Renee Wilson and Dirk Rehman.
Item 1, I.
Item 1.
Thank you.
So did somebody second that?
No.
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items E1, A through J, 2B through E, and 3B through E and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Ms. Custoni, do we have any follow-up action?
I have one, and that is to share the secondary presentation with the board so that you can see all the video files.
Thank you. You will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session regarding the employment of a particular person.
Do you have a second, Ms. Evil? All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you.